Good evening, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the St. Helena Planning Commission for March 1st, 2016, and I'm going to invite Victor Cornelia, our former interim planning director, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Present.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Kistner?
Here.
Commissioner Monette?
Here.
Chair Parker?
Present.
Moving on to our public forum, this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion nor take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Who would like to speak at public forum?
Jeff Ellsworth, Sylvester Avenue, representing Citizens Voice, St. Helena. The first thing is we noticed one of the city council members, Greg Pitts, recusing himself whenever a hotel issue comes up, and we'd like to know the specifics of why he's doing that. We as citizens have a right to know what is making an elected official recuse themselves. So, we just want to put that on the record and hopefully somebody can, you know, that can be talked about. The second item is, Napa County has the highest rate of childhood cancer in the state, and the second highest for adults, which is extraordinary, stunning, staggering. In a recent article in the Napa Register, the county says it doesn't have the resources to find out why. In my research, I've come to find that the county has hundreds of millions of dollars in invested assets. Surely these extraordinary cancer levels in our community warrant an investigation, particularly funds exist, which they do. I would call this a public health emergency. As our planning commission is an arm of our city council, I believe you're entrusted with protecting the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of our community, and since the cancer does not respect jurisdiction or city and county lines, I believe it is up to our elected and appointed officials to do all they can to bring to light the source of these unacceptably high cancer levels in our community. As soon as possible, please. The third item is that Citizens Voice has been asking for a list from the city for exactly what infrastructure here needs to be repaired, other than roads. We want, we'd like to know when it, when does it need to be repaired, and how much each item will cost, and whether any part of that cost is funded by some other source than the general fund. So, we'd like to get a list of what needs to be fixed, when does it need to be fixed, and how much will it cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak at public forum? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to our two consent items. We have two this evening. One is the approval of the minutes from our February 16th meeting. The other is a sign permit for 1530 Railroad Avenue. Does anyone have any questions or would like to pull any of those two items? Seeing no questions or concerns, if we could have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
A second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney? Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Chair Parker?
Moving on to our next item for public hearing, this is a variance and design review for 1508 Spring Street. Can we have staff report, please?
Yes, thank you Chairperson Parker. I'll try to keep this brief, as this item was continued from the December 1st meeting. The applicant is seeking design review approval to remodel and expand the existing residence by approximately 1,178 square feet, resulting in approximately 2,161 square foot living space. This would involve adding a new two-story, 1,600-square-foot addition to the rear of the home, thereby making the home one story in the front and two stories in the rear. Should be noted that because the existing home is on a raised subfloor, the two-story addition will only increase the home's height by approximately three feet. All exterior changes and additions will be finished with materials that match or complement those on the existing home. The applicant is also requesting to construct a new 400-square-foot second unit towards the rear of the property. The FAR is .31, which is approximately 220 square feet below the maximum allowed on the site. The applicant is also requesting a variance for covered parking, as the existing use is expanding, the municipal code requires one covered parking space on the property now. That being said, the existing parcel is legal nonconforming small lot, as it is less than 7,000 square feet, and has a lot width of only 36 square feet, 42 is the minimum. Currently has no covered parking and is also listed on Historic Resources master lists. Due to the narrowness of the parcel, the only functional place to put covered parking would be in the side front of the existing historic home, which would detract from the historic significance of the home. Squeezing even a small car behind the home would be extremely difficult and would require paving significant portions of the backyard to enable the car to turn around. Staff finds that the overall design elements and proposed materials and finishes are in character with the neighborhood and the community, and the proposed changes will not negatively affect the historic status of the home. Furthermore, the existing home and property is in a deteriorated condition and in need of repair. For these reasons, staff believes that variance and design review findings can be made and recommends approval of the project. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Are there any questions of staff? Are there any ex parte disclosures?
Well, I have certainly walked by the property, but I haven't spoken with anyone.
I did speak with the applicant and disclosed that I felt that the massing was too large and that that needed to be worked with and identified that parking is an issue. I went to the property, but just drove by.
I went by the property, same way Tracy did.
Yeah, I went by the property too, although I'm still not sure that is an ex parte communication.
All right, good. I'm going to open up the public hearing and invite the applicant to come forward with her proposal.
Thank you for considering this again. I really wasn't prepared last time. I hope you read my letter. I wanted you to understand that I arrived at this design with quite a bit of care. I had to satisfy Juliana Inman, and that didn't turn out to be easy. I don't know if you know this, but the last person that owned the property couldn't get a design that made Juliana happy.
You can line them up there.
If you could make sure that you speak in the microphone?
Oh, yeah, sure. Sure. I also have my magic pointer, so I won't be nervous. So, anyway, I did get a design that would satisfy Juliana Inman, and what this involved mostly was keeping the facade of the house like it is, the historic facade. And I want to point out here that this house is already quite a bit taller than its neighbors, and it's actually kind of a big facade for its size. So then, once I had gotten a design, the part of the design for Juliana, I went on to try to find something that would work for my husband and I, who are looking for sort of a last bus stop or senior, senior living of some kind. And the main thing that we wanted was no stairs. So that we found that by dropping the second floor, the first floor, down four feet, as I say, the house is quite, quite tall, actually. It's four feet off the ground to begin with. So dropping that second floor, that second, dropping the first floor down to ground level, we could get one big living space in the back that was kind of the whole ball of wax. It was, you know, it is, would be possibly, kitchen, dining, TV, living. In addition to that, I could pull a car up to the backyard, to the back, the back door, and walk in on one level, also out to the garden on one level. It really had a pretty nice, a pretty nice design for, for what we wanted. Additionally, there's space for a lift, which is a big deal. I don't want to whine about my deteriorating body parts, but my knees were, were an issue in the lift. And also, being able to pull the car up to the back and get right in the house on one level was a big deal. So, anyway, I was happy with the design, and then, have to look a minute. I wanted to ask you if you had any questions, wanted to talk about the parking. Erin was nice enough to sort of go over the difficulties of putting a car back in the historic lot. Even if I were to have been able to put a garage back there, I would have to back out, or if I attempted a three-point turn, and I have a little picture of this on my thing, you would have to pave over most of the backyard. And you would never be able to have that small rental unit, which was another thing I wanted, because I like having somebody up there in the back once in a while. And also, I thought that, you know, in advance of any needs I might have, it would be a good place for a caregiver if I ever had to have one. So, walk to town, I mean, it really fits the needs, and that's why I, I designed it as I did. Does anybody have any other questions about the parking? I did, in the, in the beginning, try to do some covered parking between the two houses, but I was told that I couldn't do that, and there, my neighbor and I would have done it. I don't see her here, but anyway, we couldn't do it because there's an easement down through the front, and also there's setbacks, so. And also, it would have, it would have looked terrible, I guess, according to Juliana Inman anyway, so. That's the reason I'm, I'm asking for a variance for the covered parking. I just, I just wanted to, to say one other thing about, about this part of Spring Street, as, and it, it speaks to your concerns about the mass, the large size of the house. You have been very, very responsive to the problems of the neighbors on Stockton Street, where there are, a lot of people have found themselves next to a big house on a small street, and the house is towering over, you know, their dwelling. And, and I can understand that. But the problems on this part of Spring Street are much different. It, it's a much different situation on the street. There's a lot of big houses, and frankly, the big houses are not a problem on Spring Street. The problem we have on Spring Street is spotty development. Not far from me, we have someone who is, this is in the, I take it from the star, I guess it's true, had 28 people, was renting to, is it 28 separate people? And that's a problem for the neighbors. And then, a big problem for the neighbors, frankly, the worst house on the street is mine. And that's been five years. Three years, we had, there, there was a problem child living there, and police calls and everything else, windows papered over. The house has been really derelict and neglected for five years. That's a long time. I hope that you will be sensitive, and I, I hope also that you have letters. I don't know if you have them, but we, we certainly did have letters from the...
I just received one.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, they disappointed me. They said they'd write letters, but never mind. They certainly have made phone calls, asking when I'm going to start construction, and I've, I've showed them all my plans. Also, just skipping around here a little bit, but you will never see anything of the house except for the facade. I mean, you, you really can't see it, and I'm going to plant, I've already discussed this with my neighbor, trees and, and hedges on both sides of the property. So, any effect of increased size will be considerably blundered. Is there anything you'd like to ask me, or?
I think that we'll reserve questions until the end, and we'll call you back up if we have any. Thank you, though. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Victor, I saw you move, and I'm like, okay. All right. Are there any questions of the applicant before I close the public hearing?
The only question I had was on the illustration around parking. I understand the three-point turn issue in the back, but what was confusing to me is you have the one car parking in the front. That is not something you intend to doing, right? Because it doesn't match up with the landscape plan.
And if you could answer in the microphone, I'm sorry.
You know, I think I have one car shown in the front, on the little diagram with the three-car parking. The, let me see.
You have two stacked in the driveway, and then you have one...
Yes, tandem.
Yeah, exactly. And then you have one car parked, I guess on Spring Street, that would be north, kind of aimed east-west, but it's in the front, but it doesn't match up with your landscape plan. You have trees there in the landscape plan.
I can hopefully clarify. So, that was shown last time, just to show that they could provide three off-street parking spaces. We wouldn't recommend a parking space being there. They could put gravel or in some plants around it and have it as an auxiliary space if they needed, but we would never recommend parking in front of a historic home like that. But it just shows they, by the letter of the law, they can meet the off-street parking requirement.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
I have a question about the, the lift.
Yes.
It's not clear to me from the plans where that is. I see you have a...
I have space for, excuse me, I have space for a lift.
Okay, is it the mechanical area on the second floor, which is actually a fairly large space, or where?
It would come, you know, it would come out in that hall area in the second floor. In other words, at the top of the stairs, there's kind of a big, that's where it would, that's where it'd come out, and it would be sort of, Tom, do you...
So, does it come out of what looks like a, if, if I'm on the first floor, across from your pantry and where your door is, to the right of, when, when you walk in your side door to the right, there appears to be a closet? Is that the proposed lift area?
Yeah, hi, I'm Tom Traynor, I'd be the general contractor if this project goes through. And the lift would go, I think it's probably where you're describing it, is when you come in the side door, it'd be immediately to your right.
To your right.
And right above there, which is at the top of the stairs, would be the, the upper landing for the lift.
So, can you explain to me why there's a need for this big mechanical room that I see on the second floor? I sort of thought that was where the lift was, but it doesn't seem to be.
No, that is only, that's basically just attic space, and so that's, the reason that's, that's there is it's just, we don't intend to develop that area, that's just where we'd put the water heater and the HVAC equipment. No, it's not existing.
But it is full-height space, isn't it?
No.
It's not.
It's not full-height.
Where does the full height start on the second level, back where the bathroom is?
At the bathroom area. That, that roof area there is sloping up towards the bridge.
I guess I have a question for the staff.
Absolutely.
I, I'm wondering if this, this mechanical space, which is actually a lot of space, and this space that's described as open on the second floor, I'm wondering if that counts as floor area? Was that counted in the calculation?
Yeah, if, if it was unconditioned and unfinished space, it wouldn't, but if that could be potentially converted into a room, it should. I don't believe it was counted toward the floor area ratio, but I'd have to double-check that.
And that would be the responsibility of staff at the building permit review to ensure that it was intended as unfinished and, and unconditioned. And then the open area, I believe, is, is floor-to-ceiling height from the first floor adjacent to the staircase going all the way up, some are devoluted ceiling.
What did you, what was meant, though, about the mechanical, the heights of it? It wasn't full-height? Is that, it's how, you know, is it, it's not a real room, or what?
I believe that if you look at cross-section, so sheet A3, if you look at B, there's an in closet, I'm assuming that's a mechanical closet, I believe that's that space. The applicant can confirm.
So, that's not habitable space?
I think that actually is the master closet.
So, then the applicant could respond to that with regards to height, but it, it is not shown as habitable space.
But I do agree with you, it does appear, if you look at A4 on the left elevation, that the two windows are the windows in the bathroom and the, where the toilet is, and that sloping roof is where the mechanical room is. It does look, though, that it's full-height, though.
So, staff would be responsible to ensure that that was unfinished and unconditioned as a part of the building permit review?
Okay, but for my purposes, I want to know if it's part of the 2,100 and whatever square feet that's in the staff report.
So, that's for the applicant, too?
Yeah.
No, it, it was not, it was not factored into the, the floor area. That, you know, that was just not factored in. I think, I think the only access to it is through the bathroom.
But is it full-height? I guess that's my, is it or not? I mean, I'm confused.
It does appear that it is.
Yeah, it doesn't look accessible, because there's that open space next to it.
Looking at the elevation, I would say it is full-height. I mean, it's height, it's, I mean, it's, it starts at, the wall height at that is like six and a half feet high, you know, so that's, that's where it is.
Do you get into it through a floor access, or how is...
It looks like you get it through, through the bathroom.
Because it's open, but it's open, is it?
You know, I haven't...
There's a little door, there's a little door on the drawing.
I wasn't phoning up on this section of, of the plan, so, I would, but I, but I can affirm that it was not factored into the floor calculation.
Okay, but how do you access it? If it's the location of...
I don't know how you'd access it, but...
It looks like it's next to the toilet.
I believe, I believe we have an answer.
But anyway, they, you know, I mean, we access mechanical areas through ceiling access doors, it'd probably be a wall access panel or something like that. That's probably how you would, how you would get into it.
From that open area? Like, from the first floor?
No, you wouldn't go from the open area. It'd probably be in the bathroom, there would probably be an access panel to get into it.
Like Alice's little door.
Or from below, there might be a ceiling access panel. That, that would be the only way you'd get into it.
But what you're saying is that the square footage of the property here, that is 2,100 and something, does not include that mechanical area?
It does not.
Okay.
I can say that with some conviction.
And unfinished attics and basements are specifically excluded from FAR, but there is a very specific definition. One of the criteria is that the maximum height must be less than seven feet.
To be excluded.
Be excluded, so, we would be looking to verify that at the building permit, and if, if the height came in above that, then either the FAR would have to be adjusted, or we would have to, it would trigger coming back to the planning commission.
All right. Commissioner Coburnstein, are you satisfied with those answers? I don't have any more questions. All right. Any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you very much. I'm going to close the public hearing and invite commissioner discussion. Who would like to tee off?
I don't necessarily want to tee off, but I think it would be helpful if we discuss the variation first.
And do we, do we want to do the parking variation, or do we want to do the...
The design review?
The design review.
I think we should...
I'm, I'm, parking, let's start with parking. Can they be separated, though? I mean, to me, the reason that we have a parking variant is because this is the design that's presented.
I think so, too.
Well, we can talk about it all together.
Yeah, all right. I mean, we can... It's going to get intermixed, anyway. I mean, we, if we accept this design, then I think that the parking limitation becomes more pronounced.
So, again, who would like to tee off on the design and parking?
Well, I, I mean, I guess I will. I, I still think it's too massive, and, and I don't think that there's been any effort to make any changes, like we asked them last, last time they were here, and I'm not ready to approve the project as it stands.
Commissioner Monette?
Well, I, yeah, I think, I don't mind the size of the house. I think the house is all right. I mean, I can see that there might be some concern about the massing, but just looking at the variance, it seems to me that the requirement is that it's not, it's not created by, by any act of the owner, but it's, you know, by act of something else. The owner in the sky, whatever. And my sense is that this is created by, by your plans, by what you want, because my sense about the parking is, it's a little lot, and, you know, if it had that house, which is big, it's big, but it, maybe it should have a littler house, but I, I'm okay with the house. But it needs, a, a pool and a second unit just seems not appropriate for it. It seems to me that the variance doesn't have to be asked for if the pool and the second unit aren't there, that there would be plenty of room for the parking as needed. And, you know, you didn't want to pave over everything, but if there's a house there and a pool, there is all paved over anyway. And I was thinking, you know, it could be a yard, and you could have covered parking or whatever. You could comply with the parking requirements if you didn't have the pool and the second unit. That's my feeling about the variance. I don't, it doesn't feel comfortable to say that the variance could be granted when it's very specific that if it's, you know, that it, it's, it only can be granted if the problem is not created by the design, so I, that's where I'm struggling, you know, so, I mean...
I think, at this point, no, we've closed the public hearing, I'm sorry. I see Grace, you're kind of getting geared up with your microphone.
And that's, that's, that, I have, yeah, okay, so that's, that's...
That's what I meant by massing, Bobby, there's just too much there.
Oh, I see, but, okay, but...
I didn't mean the house itself.
Okay, because the house, you know, I, I think the house is, would be...
There's just too much on the piece of property.
Would make your dreams come true. If that would make your dreams come true, I can live with the house.
Okay, well, I mean, I would really like to discuss this among ourselves, because I think that there's a lot of interesting issues in this case that we should resolve and come to some consensus on. I am troubled by the parking variation for several reasons. I agree with the staff that parking in the front or alongside the house is not appropriate, and it probably wouldn't fly with the historical guru, but the general plan suggests strongly that people provide parking in their rear yards, not in the front of the house, which is what we're going to end up with here, even though it won't be covered, you'll have cars parked in front of the house. And I, the whole reason for this parking variance is the second unit.
That's correct.
It's the second unit that is driving the need for the variance, and to me, that's a self-imposed problem. If it was a guest house, I don't think it needs a parking space. But if it was a guest house, it would have to count in the floor area, and so maybe that's why it's a second unit. I also note that as a garage, it could encroach in the rear yard. You know, part of the constraint here that's presented with the turnaround and everything else is, you know, based on that 20-foot setback. But you can put a garage that encroaches into your rear yard, and so I think that the desire for the pool and the, the second home are creating the problem or the conflict in the applicant's view as to why this can't happen. Whereas I think a better way to start might have been to configure the house, do the garage, and then figure out how to add in what else you could, considering that this is a fairly small lot, and maybe everything can... and maybe everything can't fit on here. I would also note that when you look at the second units and there's standards for creating a second unit, it talks about the fact that you can't take a, you can do it by an addition or new construction or converting something, but what you can't do is convert a garage to a second unit, which tells me that the garage and the parking is paramount over the second unit. So, you know, those are sort of my issues on the garage. I don't think, I'm not persuaded by the evidence that the petitioner has presented because I think it doesn't start with a clean slate and say, if I designed the house, how could I or couldn't I comply with the parking requirement? I have some issues about the massing of the house, just in terms of what else is in the neighborhood and the, you know, the requirements and the plan that you're supposed to be consistent, you know, with the neighborhood and the massing in the neighborhood. And, you know, based on my little chart and calculations, this is a smaller lot and there's more square footage on here and more FAR than the average lot in that block. And I think it's a nice design, but I do think there's some room to cut some square footage out of the design. I'm not going to try to redesign it. I think a hundred and whatever square foot mechanical room is maybe not necessary. So that's, that's sort of how I come down at this point. I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Okay, I'm struggling as well. I don't have the issue with the house. I think that it is a narrow lot. I think that to hold it to the same overall size constraints as other homes with larger lots there, although I understand what FAR is all about, I think in this case it is a tiny sliver of a lot. That being said, my understanding of the nonconforming, as long as nonconforming, we don't become more nonconforming, we can hold to this. But what, by adding the additional unit and the pool, primarily the additional unit, you've now increased the overall square footage, so therefore you trigger the review of parking and nonconforming and everything else that comes along with that. So I think that, again, similar to what Mary and Bobby were discussing is that it's the second unit that's crap, that's triggering the whole conversation. And if you didn't have the second unit, you could push back farther in the lot, you could do a garage, you could do some other things. I know that's not what you want and I completely empathize with that. I tend to be probably more aligned with it's your property and you should be given the opportunity to build it to the extent and to the design that best suits your needs and your interests and your hopes for your living situation. However, because of the fact that we are now triggering a discussion around nonconforming and parking variances, that's happening simply because we're adding this, the second unit. So I think it puts us into a, puts me into a tougher spot because normally I would find this to be fine. I don't have an issue with the size of the house and I think it meets your needs for a lot of well-thought-out reasons. But you're pushing a lot of, you're changing the decision by adding the second unit. So, makes it hard. And I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners. I think it's a big ask because of the second unit. I think it just pushes that in that sphere of you're creating the hardship yourself. So it's difficult to grant variance when the hardship wouldn't be there if there wasn't a second unit. And I do understand that that's a long driveway, it's a narrow driveway. But as Commissioner Sweeney said, it's not so much the house. It is the massing of the entire property, not so much the massing of just the main house. The main house on its own, I think, can fit with that neighborhood considering, I do think it fits your needs, but it's just, it'll be difficult to give a parking variance when the conflict is created by the applicant. And the turnaround wouldn't be nearly as tight if this was back within the setback that would be allowed for a garage. You know, I, again, because I don't have issues around massing, you could, I mean, you could put your second unit above the garage. I mean, if you're talking about a caregiver, you're not talking about your own use of the second unit around avoiding stairs. But you give yourself more play and more logistical turning space if you've got a property, if you're, if that structure's farther back. And the only way that structure can be farther back, I understand it to be if it's a garage.
And I also felt that number 11 on the findings, whether access to the property and circulation systems are safe and convenient for pedestrian cyclists and vehicles. I think by, if variance were granted, which it would have to in order to do this design, it would put more cars on the street. And I'm just thinking of cyclists that use that street. That's the street I got hit by a car on my bike. And, you know, it's, it doesn't have a, I just think it's a precedent for, if it is a precedent for granting variances, it's going to pour more cars on the street, I think. And I think that's not, I think that is an issue.
And that is a really good point. And that's, and that's why we have in the general plan, all the wording about how we want garages in the back, in the back and in the rear and the driveways and cars off the street. And considering the narrowness of this lot, it will only fit one car in front of it. It's, some houses can fit two in front of their house, in their house, and that's kind of worse. But given the narrowness of the lot, it's taking up a lot of street property.
If you can get all the cars in the back off the street, that's preferable because you can't always, you know, anyone can park there, you don't own that.
And that has, that has been a very historical trend in Santa Elena, that it is very difficult to convert a garage into a second unit. They, there want, there is a want of the city that there are garages on properties.
And I think it's been fairly well-established in this town that the people feel that too many cars parked on the street is a community issue and is a community problem. I think that has come up. So I just think it's really important not to set a precedent here.
You know, one thing I'd like to talk about a little bit is the actual design of the house. If people don't have difficulties with it, the issue is that where the kitchen extends, you're not going to be able to drive in the back and put a garage back there. It's a point made by the petitioner in her materials that she would have to cut back that kitchen family room width a little bit.
Oh, on the side?
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that.
So I don't think, you know, even if we were to deny the variance, I don't think we could approve the design as presented because the design precludes getting to the backyard.
That piece, I agree with you.
And I do agree with you. I think that it's, that it's going to need to be continued to have a new design if that's the direction that we go because if we don't grant a variance, then there does need to be a solution with how to get the car into the garage. And we don't have a good plan of that.
And, you know, on this, on the second unit, I mean, a second unit does have to comply with the setback requirement. So I'm not quite sure how you could design it above the garage or whatever, but maybe you could have a breezeway or something between them.
I was just thinking, just have it not be set, have it not be connected to the garage. The garage can be within that 20-foot setback as long as it's unplumbed and, I mean, it just has to be unplumbed. And then have this second unit just not be attached and have three buildings. Not to design the whole, the project, but that is a possible solution.
That seems like, to me, that, I guess, it seems to me that there's not, this is a tiny little lot. I don't think there's room for a second unit on this lot, to my mind.
All right, so yours is saying the second unit, full stop?
No, I think there needs to be provision for parking in the house and then, you know, a yard. But I think, I think another second unit would be, it would just be too much.
So I think that we are kind of, we are heading into the direction of a continuance to have the applicant come back to us with, with a garage in the rear of the property. Is that?
And the side modified, so.
And it would have to be modified in order to get that done. But is that where we're going? Is that how we want to do a motion? Are we comfortable with that? Is there anything else that we want to add?
Do we need to say anything about a pool?
To be perfectly honest, I think as long as they put a garage in the backyard, I'd like to see what they come back at us with. I think that.
Pool's not, not under consideration either. That's permitted by right.
Yeah. It's not so much that, it's, at this point, it's just, the variance is denied or we're saying, no, we're not, it's, there needs to be garage in the rear and we need to see new plans. And I think, is that, is that, was that a correct accumulation?
I agree. And I sort of want to echo Bobby's views about the second unit. I think that it's permitted, but there are some places where it may just not be appropriate. I myself, you know, voted against getting rid of the exemption for it because I didn't think it was the appropriate way to handle it and I thought we should deal with them on a case-by-case basis. And here, when you take the FAR that you already have on the house and then you add the second unit, even though it doesn't count to F, for FAR, it's still a lot of mass on a small lot, especially if you add the 200 square feet of garage that's going to have to be in the back. So I'm, you know, open to looking at revised plans, but I'm not certain that there's, you know, room to put that much structure on this lot.
Well, if there's enough of feeling on that, we can strongly emphasize that a second unit is discouraged. And I think, I think that we have enough of that to say that in going, moving forward. All right, if we have a motion to continue?
Well, I'll move that we continue this application again so that the applicant can present a redesign that complies with the parking requirements. You know, and we'll, it also entails some revision to the house so that you can get to the backyard and then we'll take a look at the new presentation.
We'll second that.
I'm sorry.
It will be an up and down vote for the motion to continue. Thank you. I think that, let's just stick it at that and see what design comes back and that you know, from us verbally, we're saying that it, that the second. Is that what the applicant, are you asking about an up and down vote on the content? Yeah, that's what I'm going to say.
I do think we should have a vote on the variance.
Okay.
Because.
Yeah, I think that's what you're asking for. Then let's have a motion on the variance.
Okay.
I move that we don't approve the variance.
Yeah, I second that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
No.
Chair Parker?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the motion passes to deny the variance and staff will prepare a resolution and bring it back for the next planning commission meeting for formal action just because the resolution you have before you is for approval.
Okay. All right, does that, do we need to deal with?
Well, then I'll just renew, renew my motion to continue the design review of the rest of the project.
Is that necessary?
She would like, the applicant would like an up or down vote on the design review as well, I believe.
Well, I think that without, with denying the parking variance, that there can't really be an up or down vote on the design review. It is.
Procedurally, it would be cleaner, I think, for the applicant if you could take action on the design as well. Otherwise, you are correct that the, the designer view can't be acted on without the variance.
Well, we just want to do a continuous, we'll just do a motion to approve or deny. So if we can have a motion to approve or deny the design review.
What? I just have a question. If we deny the design review, what is the consequence?
Well, the applicant could appeal the decision of the planning commission of both. And I think that's the intent, is the applicant's interested in having a whole action that can be appealed to the council without breaking it up. Or the appeal period ends if no appeal comes in and a new application would be required for any project to move forward.
Well, we're required to.
And I do believe we need to keep it together.
Yeah, well, I, then I will move to deny the design review, is that?
And again, just to go over, procedurally, it's okay to have a, I can speak, to have it on the variance and the design review separately, or will that hinder an appeal process?
No, it'll streamline the appeal process. I, it would be, now that the variance has been denied, this design essentially cannot be approved.
So this is just procedural.
Right, so what's the point of appealing? I don't.
It's appeals to the city council.
If there's no action on it.
We have to act.
Okay, but.
The point of making the second motion.
That presumes that the council would grant the variance and approve it as it is.
Well, just, if the council chooses to grant the variance, then the design would have to come back before the commission because there's no action on the design, which is, I believe, why the applicant's requesting action on the design review as well as the variance.
If the council denies the variance, then it has to come back, is what you're saying. If they approve the variance, they can approve the design as it is.
Not if the planning commission doesn't act on it.
So we have to act on it so the city council can act on it.
Okay.
Okay, so if we get a motion on the design review.
I, I move that we deny the design review.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Can we state our reasons? I think it's important for the record to have some discussion before we vote.
Yeah, I think, in my understanding, since we have now denied the variance, then we need to be considering this plan as it is with no variance. And the only way we can approve it is if there was a variance. So there's really, at this point, it's a procedural to officially deny it, correct?
And I think some of the concerns relating to massing, as it would relate to the findings that are required to be made in the design review approval, or should it be approved? I think the, the, some of the discussion was informative to staff as to the resolution that'll come back before the commission for formal action. But if the commission could tie some of the reasoning to the findings, that would be helpful to staff and the applicant.
In my case, I have no issue with the house. I do agree with Commissioner Coburnstein that there would be need, you would need to redesign if you're going to get to the back. But from a design standpoint and knowing the limitations and knowing what the applicant's interested in, I don't have a problem with this design. I know that's not shared among my commissioners, so it's not a.
Well, my problem with it, since it comes with the variance, I've, findings five, six, eight, and 11, and under the variance A, C, and D, I had problems with those. So if those, if you wanted those to be noted, those are my, that's my contribution, anyway. Part of the reason that I made the motion was to accommodate the applicant's wish. I don't know if that's a legitimate reason, but I, you know, I don't see.
No, that's fine.
I have no problem with that and I would like to cooperate with the applicant in this way.
That's fine. I agree. Grace, do you have any comments?
I kind of agree with what Bobby says and I also agree with Commissioner Coburnstein is that if we got to, there's going to have to be a change in the design in order to accommodate a garage in the back. And so I, I think like, I think we're spinning our wheels and going around in circles is what I think. That's the way I, if you're modest, I mean, that's how I feel. And if we have to.
This is really just for the findings.
Deny that in order to let her do what she needs to do, then, then I would second Bobby's motion.
Commissioner Coburnstein?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think, my main issue with the design here is, first of all, it precludes putting the garage in the back. And I suppose you could say, well, I'll take three or four feet off the house. But in addition to that, I don't think it's consistent with the plan, which is one of the major standards for design review. And since I think we need to make a record, I will say that the plan, when it discusses residential neighborhoods, it talks about encouraging development that's consistent in design, size, color, footprint. And the recently updated language includes FAR of the other residences in the neighborhood. It talks about garages in the rear of the lots rather than on the street, the lot coverage in the land use section and FAR that is consistent with the scale of historic and older areas. And I think, I mean, I haven't been here a long time, but I've heard an awful lot about people's concerns about the historic western neighborhood in town. And I think this is a perfect example of part of the problem. And were this lot larger, it would be easier to deal with the mass of this structure. But on all other measures, it's oversized compared to everything else in this block. And if we're going to begin to address FAR somehow, I think we have to rely on the direction of the plan. And I don't want to re-engineer this house, but I'm sure there are probably some ways to cut down 100 square feet or more and make it a little more palatable. And for all those reasons, I cannot support an affirmative vote on design review on this particular project. I commend the applicant, however, for trying to do a wonderful job with a historic structure. But it's a very small lot and you can't just go to the maximum on a small lot and remain consistent with the rest of the neighborhood.
I just wanted to clarify that when you were mentioning the plan. I just wanted to clarify that when you were mentioning the plan and when, when you were speaking, you meant the general plan and not, not the plan of the house, because there, there might be some confusion, yeah.
Which is, you know, one of the first standards for design review, were your microns?
Your microphone, Mary.
That's correct.
She said with the consist- consistency of the general plan. What's so nice about going after Mary is there's not a whole lot to add, so I'm just going to say I agree with her, and if we could have a motion for the design review to-
We do.
No, we didn't vote on it.
I know we didn't vote, but we had the motion.
All right, so if we can have roll call on it.
The motion is to disapprove?
Is to not approve.
Yeah, we should have another motion, I think.
Can we do another one? We've talked about findings and whatnot.
I move to deny the design review. Grace, you have a second?
Are you going to second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
I mean, we can list a bunch of reasons.
Well, I think that was-
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Koberstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Parker?
Yes. Moving on to our new business, we have two items. One is a, our first is a report by our planning consultant, Victor Carniglia, on the general plan update with remaining steps and timelines.
Thank you, Chair Parker. As you mentioned, the, the item before you today, item seven is an update on the general plan update process as well as the EIR, and this is being done by planning consultant Victor Carniglia, who I'm sure you are all well versed in. Victor, and welcome him back to the commission.
Hi, Victor.
Well, thank you, Seba. How do you turn these things on again? Oh, there we go. Well, I'm, I'm very glad to be back. It's good to see you, everyone, again, and see the commission. The purpose of this item, as indicated on the agenda, is to give the, a commission the status update on the general plan update process, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about the, the general plan itself in terms of the update, and then the kind of companion piece to that, the EIR. Planning consultant Jerry Haig is going to be talking about that. And then, once we've done our, our presentation, then we'll open up for questions and, and go from there. So obviously, this is an informational item. So in, in discussing the general plan update, I think it's, in terms of where we are, it's, it's important to discuss where we've been and how, you know, where the process started and how long it's been underway. And if you look at the, the history of the process, it began back in, in 2005 with the appointment of the, the first general plan subcommittee by the city council. And that committee met for roughly a year, year and 18 months, and the committee's main task was to scope the general plan and, and to, to look at and, and vet various planning consultants. The, in 2006, the council appointed a, a general plan steering committee, and in 2007, the, the council, the city selected the consulting firm of, of MIG out of Berkeley to do the, the general plan update. The, the consultant essentially started the effort in 2007 and worked for roughly three years, and in mid-2010 had prepared a draft of the, the general plan and the, and the EIR, and those two documents went to the, to the Planning Commission in the summer of 2010, and to the, the city council in the fall of 2010. The city council reviewed the documents and a number of issues came up primarily related to water and water availability, at least those were some of the key issues that were raised, or main issues that were raised. And the city council, after some discussion, decided now we're looking at roughly late 2010, early 2011 to, at first, the item was continued, and then council essentially tabled the general plan. And there were a variety of reasons, I could go into those, it was probably not worth getting into the details, but the main issues essentially dealt with questions of water and water availability. I think the key thing to point out is that, at that point in time, both the general plan and EIR was, were essentially ready to go, and council decided that there were some issues that needed further work, and the general plan ended up being tabled. From, from there, essentially from late 2000, I'm sorry, early 2011 up until 2014, the general plan was considered, I'd say, the best way to describe it, as somewhat sporadically by council. There were a number of study sessions that were held, council, I believe in one year there weren't any study sessions, a year after there were a number. But essentially, what council did during that three-plus-year timeframe was tackle a number of, of issues that had kind of tripped up the general plan process back in, in 2010 and 2011. Essentially, in June of 2014, which is pretty much when I came on the scene here in San Lina, the council really had gone through the whole plan, essentially starting over in many ways, and provided direction to staff. And so that, that was kind of a, I guess, a watershed, so you've had this scenario where the plan was initiated way back 2005, came forward, was ready to go, and then wasn't acted on, and then a number of years later, the, the general plan moved forward again, and the policy issues, at least from a council direction standpoint, were clarified. So from there, as commissioners may recall, what I did then was bring the various changes that the, the city council had directed and brought those to the Planning Commission for the review of the Planning Commission, and that occurred in late 2014, I believe, from September to December of 2014. Then what, what was done was I, I took the general plan back to council in a couple study sessions. The idea was to get the general plan to indicate that the document as drafted was appropriate to consist of, as a, a project or the project for the purposes of the SEQA document. So council essentially did that in April of, of 2015, and during the summer, there was some additional work that was done on the general plan, mainly at the staff level. I was working with the attorneys, and there was some issues that needed to be cleaned up, and we brought the plan back to the council, and council essentially blessed the next set of revisions in September of 2015. And if you look on the website, that's the, the version of the, the general plan that's, that's currently on the website. So you can see you have essentially a 10-year stretch from when the general plan was, was first envisioned, although in 2005 it was simply selecting a subcommittee, to essentially 2015 where we had a plan that had addressed the major policy issues, and then in, once we had the blessing from council back in April on the, a plan from, from the EIR project standpoint, that's when the EIR update process began in earnest. So what I'd like to do now is just, kind of, we're getting near the finish line, which obviously is part of the reason we're here in front of you tonight, and just talk about what are the next steps, and those are really laid out, you know, to some extent in the staff report, but really from a general plan standpoint, it's a little more detailed in terms of the SEQA document, and Jerry will talk about that. But we're finishing up the latest draft of the general plan. There was a direction from council as it related to hotel issues, some direction also is related to the general plan designation on a number of city-owned properties, the upshot of which is, and it necessitated further adjustments and modifications to the plan, and the plan's written in this desktop publishing program, which is, it looks great, but it's challenging to update in terms of making the changes. So the long and the short of it is, from a scheduling standpoint, we're looking at having the version of the latest, I guess I'd call it a final draft of the general plan, being published on the city's website and made available to the general public the end of March, on March 28th, and is noted in the, in the schedule in front of you. That obviously has to go hand-in-hand with the EIR, which Jerry's going to talk about, but we're looking at a initial commission hearing in the not-too-distant future, that being April 19. And before I turn it over to Jerry to briefly talk about the EIR, there's kind of three things I'd like to emphasize that are, I guess, critically important in, when you're looking at general plans, and I think in, and are particularly important in this case, and in some ways unique to this case. One is that the general plan update process is very expensive. It's something that's not done often, but it is not cheap to do. And just to give you some perspective, throw out some numbers, to move the general plan from that initial process in 2005 to late 2010, when the general plan was essentially ready to go along with the EIR but was never acted on, cost the city in consulting fees, not counting staff time, of approximately $1.2 million. It's a lot of money. The city has been updating the document and the EIR, as I just laid out, and we've been doing that in a very cost-effective manner, much less than the, the $1.2 million, but I, I think it's important to note there really are some significant financial implications with the general plan document. The other key thing to point out is that until we adopt a new general plan, we have to tie back and relate back to the old plan, and in this case, we're not talking about a 2005 plan, 2000 plan, we're talking about a 1993 plan. And that essentially was a 20-year plan, and for lack of a better word, that plan has expired in terms of its timing. So we've, we've kind of gotten our money's worth, I guess, out of the 93 plan, but it's high time we moved on to the new one. And the last thing, and probably the most important when talking about a general plan, is, is to, to realize and recognize, even though they've had a long timeframe, they're an evolving document, they're never intended to have everything right for that full-time period. First of all, you can never predict the future that well, you're lucky to be particularly in anything economic five years into the future. So it's important to note it's an evolving document, and a general plan should be reviewed annually, or at least biannually, the state recommends that it be done annually. So just to emphasize, there is no perfect general plan. I mean, you can have a document that you feel reflects as best as, as possible, but it's also, just by the nature of it, a document, you can end up refining endlessly, there really is, given the, the range of issues and topics that are dealt with, in a lot of ways, there's kind of no end to it. So with those caveats, I'd like to have Jerry Haig, who's the planning consultant, who's been very ably shepherding the, particularly the general plan, EIR, update process forward.
Thanks, Victor, welcome. Thank you for having me. I'm just going to stand here at the podium so I can be limited to three minutes of my discussions. So Victor and I are working closely with the city attorney's office to update the EIR for several reasons. First, we, we need to make sure that the EIR, the current EIR, the 2010 EIR, really no longer reflects what the city wants to do in terms of a general plan build-out, and by law, it really needs to do that. So that's why we've embarked on this effort that's taken several months to date. So far, our, our efforts have included updating particularly relevant new laws or regulations that have been adopted by state, federal agencies since 2010 that need to be at least referenced in the, the updated EIR. We're refreshing the analysis that, technical analysis that may need to be changed, because there are now different assumptions in the general plan in terms of buildup, projections, population, that sort of stuff. So it needs to be really consistent with what the city expects, even though we may not guess right, but it needs to be consistent. We're also looking at new conditions that have appeared upon the scene since 2010, and as Victor noted, the drought is probably the number-one issue that has caused a lot of discussion with the general plan itself, so we need to reflect that in the EIR. So for those reasons, we're starting on a, not a comprehensive update to the general plan, but a certainly very detailed analysis, using what we can use to save money, because it's a fairly expensive process, and going from there. So we're approximately 90% done, we feel like we're, we're, we're making good progress, so the status is good. So as Victor said, we hope to have a new document ready for public review on or around April 4th, which will, we will then go to a new 45-day review period for the public so they can comment on new changes, anything else that they wish to change, or at least comment on in the general plan. Then, as required by SEQA, we will, we will provide responses to those comments, and then we send it all up to you to work your magic. So that's, in a nutshell, where we stand on the general plan, EIR.
I think that actually was under three minutes.
You can ask me questions. Thank you.
And, and I just want to wrap up by saying first, thank you to both of these gentlemen. Frankly, I don't know where we would be if these two people were not helping us get this done. I mean, $1.2 million to date does not include the work that these two folks are doing, and frankly, they are doing it for a fraction of what it would cost if we contracted with a former, a formal planning firm. So I just wanted to say thank you, and, and the experience that both of these two gentlemen bring to this process is allowing this to move forward, and they're doing very quality work, and I know you as a commission, and the public, and the citizens here in town will be very happy to see the final document as we finally bring it forward. Just wanted to wrap up with that.
And are there any questions, just in regards to the schedule? No, no questions on substance of the general plan, but are there any questions for Jerry or Victor, since we have them in front of us? And if you do have questions on this substance, you can send an email.
And so one thing to note, we, the, the schedule does anticipate bringing the general plan before the commission during the EIR comment period, so those, those processes are, are parallel, so just, just something to be aware of for the citizenry as well as for the commission.
That's typically the way we've done it in the past in the city, is have the, a comment period or scoping session while the 45 days run, so.
Right, and, and part of that is simply for efficiency, since there's so much to cover in one of these things, that it, I think the sooner we get into it, the better, and as Jerry indicates, we can use one of the general plan hearings as a way of, of receiving comments on the EIR, so that's, that's also a very good and efficient way of doing things, and that way the commission can kind of hear firsthand what, what the, the comments are. And really, we're not expecting the commission to really recommend or act on the, the plan and EIR until we've gotten the comments and probably until the responses are done, although technically, the commission legally can, can make its recommendation before the, the full response to comment and document is put together. Yes? Yeah.
We're not the deciding body.
I, I understand, it just seems, it would be strange for any body, deciding body, to decide before all the information was in.
But, just to, we're not advocating that, we're just simply indicating we're kind of getting, moving at a time that it seems to make sense and is efficient. It's not our intent to, to bring it to the commission ahead of the comments being received and responses being prepared.
No, I think it's fine to have a period where people can comment from the city.
I, I guess I'd like to ask that we, we get a hard copy of that as soon as we can, as soon as they're available.
Sure.
So that we can get started on it, maybe two or three weeks before we hear it.
Right.
They're not too easy to go through, and-
Right.
I've sat on this since 2005, I was on the original committee, so.
We are not going to be making a recommendation before the comment period is over, are we?
No, no.
No, okay, okay. All right, thanks.
I just have a question about the format. I mean, what I've seen shows a red line, which I believe is to the 2010, or-
No, if, if-
Is it to the-
It, it's to the, the April 2015 document. It, it's to the, um, the April 2015 document. If we showed a red line from the 2010, it would, it would be, it's pretty daunting.
It'd be brown with purple.
I've, I've got a copy of something that, um, uh, in more of a Word document because, and it's, it's difficult to, to do in the desktop publishing program because it doesn't really support track changes that well. But I have some underlying Word documents and, and the changes to the text are significant. And those mostly evolved out of those council hearings that occurred between 2011 and, and, um, June of, of 2014.
Well, I think just because we're considering a replacement for this 23-year-old plan, or whatever it is, it would be helpful to me if you or the staff could summarize at the beginning of the hearing what the, what the changes from the current, you know, obsolete plan.
Not the interim, all the variations that have come along the way. But basically, what material differences exist between 1993-
Right.
And what will be ultimately 2016? And, I mean, from a top, I think that, that there, I know there's lots of nuances and lots of-
Right.
There's some big tickets that we went from here to there, and I think-
Right.
What is the purpose of your wanting that? I don't understand why you want it. I mean, we're not working on it anymore.
I just want to understand what the difference is and what the, how the policy is changing from the plan.
Well, read the 1919, it's really, it's really short, actually.
So we're, we're getting a little bit off-topic from the schedule.
Yeah.
Question?
If you have, let's email Noah questions on that matter.
Okay, let me just add one last thing on that point. There is a copy on the, on the city's website right now of a comparison document between the 1993 plan and the 2010 plan, as it existed back then. So perhaps I could look at updating that, but that's something we can explore.
Thanks. All right, perfect. Moving on to our next item. No, it's not an actionable item. Is a report from our urban planning partners on the Hunter project. So if I can invite Carla.
Carla Violet is here from Urban Planning Partners. And, uh, again, staff asked both Victor and Jerry to come and give an update on the general plan, uh, as well as Carla to give an update on the Hunter project. Just because it's been a while since the public has seen these. They know that we've been working on them, but I wanted to bring forward a schedule, just as kind of an update for the public and the commission to understand how close these, uh, are to, um, coming before some decision-makers and opening up for public comment. I will emphasize that this is only to talk about the schedule. Uh, and Carla is not the, uh, principal on this project. So the intent is not for detailed questions on the project. I know there's a lot of those out there.
But who are you with?
I'm with Urban Planning Partners.
Okay.
Yes, so Lynette Diaz is the principal.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carla Violet. Nice to be here. And as Noah stated, I'll be giving just a quick update on schedule. Just want to start off and apologize that it's been so long, um, since we've been here and given you all an update. But the good news is, is that in, as you can see from the schedule here, two weeks, we are going to be submitting an admin draft of the updated EIR to the city for their review and comments. And that will follow, after that, it'll be about four or five weeks, where we'll have time to produce a screen check draft, incorporate any comments that the city may have. And then ultimately, come with a public review draft the third week of April. So we have April 19th right now as our anticipated publish date. Um, and what will follow is a standard 45-day public review period for comments on the draft EIR. So if there's any questions that I can answer, I'm happy to. And if there's anything more substantive, we can have emails maybe for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for spending your evening with us.
Sure, no, it's good to be here. Thank you.
Are there any questions on scheduling?
I do. I have a question. That will also come, um, to us during the comment period?
Uh, with, with this situation, I, I don't know that we're gonna bring the project forward, uh, separate from the EIR. General plan is a lot different of a document and a process than an individual, uh, project is. And so this, I am not anticipating that staff will be bringing forward, um, the project during the public review period of the EIR. But I have not talked to the consultants about how we're going to, um, time that.
I was just thinking, since there is, since it's a contentious issue, it's a contentious project, that that might be a good idea, but I, if it's possible. But I, I don't know the proto, I mean, you know, how, how-
Again, the, the process is significantly different from an individual development review. So, so staff will look at that and thank you for such a suggestion. We'll look at it and come, come up with the best procedural process to bring the project forward.
Okay.
All right, perfect. Any other questions? All right, moving on to our department report, an opportunity for staff to give us more updates.
Thank you, Chair Parker. Uh, just a few brief, um, points I wanted to make you. So you will notice that there is no agenda forecast document summary in this packet, as was previously, um, included. And, uh, that was an oversight on, oversight on staff's part. Well, essentially, we just didn't have time to update that, um, that, uh, forecast document. So staff will be bringing forward a new forecast document with the next, uh, agenda. And it'll identify some of the, the commission-directed items that staff's working on currently. Uh, I also wanted to point out that, um, the commission bylaws are going to the city council at the next meeting on the 8th, as required. So once those are adopted by the city council, then those will be in place, the bylaws that we worked on, making some modifications. Similarly, uh, the city council goals, which came out of the goal-setting session, are, um, on the agenda for formal adoption by the city council, uh, at the 8th. So again, staff will then, um, bring those back for a discussion item if needed by the commission. Or at least, um, we'll include the council report to the commission as just a summary for a heads-up, so.
Be nice to have.
That's, that's what, uh, staff wanted to talk about and just let you know. Other than that, we are seeing a significant interest in development still. Um, it's, it's common to have kind of a slowdown period over the holidays, and that did not really occur with us. So as you'll see with the agenda, we are still very, very busy, um, but also getting a lot of things accomplished, so.
Good. Any questions? All right, um, agenda forecast. Kind of one of the same as what you just did.
So we didn't provide the document, but it's, um, you will have an updated one at the next meeting.
All right, perfect. Well, thank you all for coming, and we'll see you in two weeks.